Are construction workers victims of a political partisan war? And why is the fight to lower our property taxes such a public one between the Texas Senate and House? Grab something cold because producer Carleon Jones is recapping the hottest news of the week with Pulitzer Prize finalist Evan Minz and writer Sheam Galyon. It's Friday, June 23rd, 2023. I'm Rahil Ramzan Ali, and here's what Houston's talking about.
Hey, hey, hey. Happy Friday, y'all. Hey, Sheam. Hey, Evan. How are y'all today?
Hey, Carly. I'm so excited that the weekend is here. Um, how are you, Evan?
I am doing great. I cannot wait for this July 4th week. I've got the week off work. I've got family vacations. I've got watermelons in the yard ready to be eaten. I am excited.
Oh, yeah. Evan's about to party. He's, he said he has the week off of work, not just one day. Oh, yeah.
I just want to confess now that like Evan Minz is my like Martha Stewart of Houston, like lifestyle tips. Yes, yes, I am here for it. I was just gonna get a vanilla ice cream cone, but Evan has like gardens anyways.
Hey, the plants do the hard work. I just watch.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let's jump right into it. So Evan, what is your biggest story of this week?
The biggest story of the week is that we have a second special session, you know? It's the sequel. It's the judgment day. It's the electric boogaloo. Apparently, the Republican-run Texas House and the Senate couldn't agree on a way to cut property taxes, which is astounding. Like, you'd think this is a thing that Republicans can do in their sleep, just cut property taxes. It's what they exist to do. But they couldn't agree on a method. So here we are at a second special session. Uh, and I think that's just astounding, and it shows a real core dysfunction of the way our state government works. But what really stands out to me is the fact that Texas Democrats are just kind of sorting between the House side and the Senate side. And rather than standing up and presenting their own vision of what policy should be and showing voters what they would do if they got elected. You know, Democrats have been failing to win any statewide position for nearly a quarter century. And I think it's just they've forgotten what it's like to govern. They just don't know what they would do if someone, say, gave them a wish and said, hey, you can pass some policies in the state. What do you want to happen?
So do you think that it's just that they just don't know what to do anymore, or that they just kind of want to stay out of it since they know that it's going to be like a harder fight for them to win?
Well, I think it's that if you want to try to have any sort of power within the existing systems, you have to work within them. If you're in the Senate, you want to make Lieutenant Governor happy. If you're in the House, you want to make the Speaker happy. So you kind of play along. You don't stick your neck out. Now, to their credit, about 18 House Democrats put out their own statement with their own general vision of what a tax-public education plan would look like if they could do something, but it's not really making headlines, and they're really not pushing it. I just think that the Democrats have been bopped down so many times that they're afraid to speak out on something like this.
My two big thoughts on this are just remembering that Texas has a $34 billion surplus right now. Um, and I was thinking about this as I was thinking about the stories that I wanted to share and knowing kind of like the power dynamics, uh, in the Texas legislature. And I was also imagining what I would do if I was in that leadership position. I think it's easy to be like, ah, yeah, I guess they're not getting anything done because it's just so hard. And I want to gently push back, Evan, that like, you know, you have to work within the power system. Um, I think that there's ways to transmute the power dynamics when you're in them. And I would, I would like to see more of that. I would like to see, um, more coordination to change the culture and the dynamics.
I, I think that the, the Democrats could put the Republicans on their heels if they wanted to by presenting a better, more popular vision. Uh, but right now, I think they're afraid of what would happen if they did that. I mean, you see the split between the governor and the lieutenant governor. And if the Democrats tried to get involved in the fight, maybe you would just unite them. Maybe it would undermine, uh, the division that we're seeing. Uh, but at the same time, like, what's the point of getting elected to office? What's the point of trying to run statewide? If you can't present an alternative vision of what you would actually do if you got power?
I think it's a myth that things have to be this way. But I'm always imagining, like, how could it be different?
Yeah, like, we need that imagination of a better future. There's too much dystopia. Give me a little utopia.
Okay, Sheam, what was your biggest story this week?
So this is kind of why I was daydreaming about how the Texas legislature could be different. Because my top story this week that I've been thinking about is how the new Houston ISD superintendent, Mike Miles, had their first public, uh, community meeting. They're having a series of these community meetings that you can find the details for online. Um, and this one is the first of them. As you, we've talked about on CityCast. Uh, previous public hearings during the, the Texas Education Agency takeover of HISD were very contentious. Like, state agency side kind of was like, there were reports of them, like, keeping community members out of meetings. Um, and it was just like very difficult to see. And there was also like a lot of uncertainty, a lot of anxiety, a lot of, um, anger. And so this is the first public meeting. A few things to note, um, like the vibe was different. Um, so everybody was in the room. There was high turnout. Um, but I think about like 90 people. And it was really the meeting where Mike Miles kind of like laid out what his reform plans are. And they include higher teacher pay. Teachers will be focused on teaching, so there will be like assistance to like make copies and stuff. And then probably the biggest, like, question mark was around, uh, his vision for what discipline would look like. Which was like if somebody, if a student is being disruptive, that they would be taken out of the classroom and put into a Zoom room. Which, to be honest, when I first read that, because I have a cat, I was like, oh, is this a room where the kids can run around in? Um, but, but it's actually a room where there's a Zoom of the class instructions. So instead of being in the class and interacting, there will be a video, like, feed. And, uh, Mike Miles was like, hey, I know that this is gonna make some people nervous. I really think that this is a good idea for discipline. So it seemed like a, like a, hey, we're trying things out kind of tone. You know, I don't have any kids. I don't have kids in school, but having quality public education is so important for a functioning democracy. We really need to like have good faith, trying everything we can. And when Evan shares updates about the Texas legislature, and I remember we have $34 billion in surplus, I just imagine like, man, if I was governor of Texas, I would make an announcement like, hey, we have all this extra money. So we're gonna be doing some research and putting together proposals and accepting proposals from the community on how to improve our schools.
Yeah, it sounds interesting because like, I think so far from what you're telling me about, um, the ideas that he's bringing in, I definitely think adding more income to teachers' salaries is gonna be a big thing that will actually like bring more teachers in. Because it's already a hard job, and then you're not getting paid enough to do the job. It's kind of just like discouraging. I understand why a lot of people leave that profession. So that'll be a great thing. And then also these Zoom rooms, that sounds really interesting because a lot of the time when you take a kid out of a classroom for being disruptive, they go to in-school suspension. And while they're in school, in the in-school suspension, they're not really learning much. Like, they're kind of just sitting there, being quiet, not really getting the education that they still need. So the idea of taking them into a room where they're still watching what's going on in class is pretty cool to me. I like how they're kind of like inserting things that we got from the pandemic into the actual classroom.
Oh, yeah, you know, I, I think there's a lot of opportunity at the state level with all the money we have. Uh, and it's depressing to not see it be used in an effective way. You know, my dad used to say that money's a thing you throw at problems to make them go away. Money doesn't solve everything, but it sure can help. And for too long, I have heard politicians talk about how, well, we don't need to pay teachers more because this is a job of passion. We don't want people in it for the money. We want it because they love the kids. And there's no other industry like that. You don't see pipeline companies in downtown Houston say, well, we're not gonna pay for the best. We just want people who are passionate about pipelines. No, they put their money where their mouth is. And all the research I've seen shows that when you pay good teachers more money to go into schools that need help, you really do see improvements. But the challenge is keeping that level of funding, keeping those monetary bonuses in so that you can maintain higher performance. Uh, and I think in a lot of times when this has been tried, they just don't stick it out. But with these Zoom rooms, I gotta say, I'm a huge nerd. I always have been. And one of the things that always pissed me off as like a little dork in class was when there'd be some kid there who's having a good time with his friends, playing around during class, and I want to learn. I want to hear what the teacher's saying. And it always pissed me off when the teacher would have to put their attention on the kids acting out. So, you know, from my perspective, it's good to try to separate out the kids who want to learn with the kids who don't want to learn. You know, there, there are gonna be kids in every school who really should be lifted up, and I think we need to put more attention on that, on that opportunity there that often gets overlooked.
Yeah, I completely agree.
Yeah, it's a good idea to try something new, just like you said, way better than in-school suspension. I think what will probably happen is that Zoom rooms will work for some kids, and they won't work for other kids. Um, so we'll have to, yeah, we'll have to watch and see.
Oh, definitely. Everything doesn't work for every person, so yeah. So my biggest story is the heat and its effects on our electricity. So right now, we're under a really high demand of electricity, which is kind of putting us in a place where we're getting like warnings where we might lose power. And Tuesday, the electricity demand across Texas was said to have most likely surged to its highest point ever. And this is all just because of the ongoing heat. My thing with this is we have very high heat waves every year, every summer. We know they're coming. And this year, it's worse. Last year, it was worse than normal as well. The Electricity Reliability Council of Texas operates the grid for like 90% of the state, and I think that that might be the major problem. We need to like spread that out to more companies so that we can really actually combat this where people don't have to lose power or have to lose their air, because it's miserable in Texas in 100-degree heat to not have an air conditioning or power. Your food's rotting, like, it's just, it's just so bad. So why have we not fixed this?
I think you're spot on. And you know, there was a bill that went through the legislature to incentivize more efficient use of energy. Uh, so that when we had moments of high demand to incentivize lower demand, and the governor vetoed it. So that's where we are. But I will say that we have incredibly high demand right now, and yet we haven't had the sort of blackouts and brownouts caused by that that you'd expect to see. And the reason is that solar and wind are vastly overperforming. And it's kind of funny that we've had this kind of turn against renewables, being accused of being unreliable, when they are saving our butts right now. Meanwhile, we have a massive shutdown of thermal units of coal and natural gas. And if we really just had to rely on those, we'd be in big trouble right now. We'd be paying so much for power, but solar, they actually had to ramp it back because it was producing too much even at these record demand moments. So I have to say, like, we got to give a little respect to the renewables out there, saving our butts and keeping us cool.
Yeah, because if we didn't have that, then I feel like we would have way more outages than we are, we're having right now. Because currently, my air normally would have gone out already. It hasn't been working at its best. Like, I might have put it on like 65 or 68, and it might be still like 72 in the house. Like, it's not really working its best. But it hasn't gone completely out yet. So to know that it's because so many other people are using solar power and kind of like trying to combat it themselves is great. But it's kind of discouraging that our government isn't trying to help it.
Oh, yeah. No, it's, uh, they seem to be driven more by the partisan politics involved in energy rather than just looking at the data, and it drives me nuts.
Yeah, that's very discouraging for sure. Okay, let's go to our most overlooked story. Evan, what was the most overlooked thing for you this week?
The most overlooked story this week is a story by Doug Begley in the Houston Chronicle about how Metro is pursuing a redevelopment of its Attic's Park and Ride parking lot as part of a public-private strategy to better use the land that it owns. Now, all across the country, when you build transit, the idea is that you want people to use it, and they'll use it if it's convenient. That means usually that a lot of people live near it so they can walk to stops. But in Houston, it's kind of hard to make happen. One, just because of how our city is designed. But two, because you don't have zoning to kind of incentivize that up-zoning, down-zoning of density that you'd want to see. But, uh, with this, basically, Metro is saying, we own this land. We can get private developers to come in and just build something there that would make these, uh, park-and-ride stops very useful for a lot of people. And I'm really happy to see that shift in mentality and the thought of how we can better use our existing infrastructure. I think too often when people think about ways to improve transit in Houston, they're thinking about big capital projects, new light rail lines, new commuter rail. We have a pretty good bus system. What can we do to get more people onto it? LA spent tons of money to build a subway system, and after they built it, they saw ridership actually decline. What was going on there? Well, the problem was that they just didn't have good density around their stops. And so it just didn't make a lot of sense for people to use it because they weren't anywhere near it. But in Houston, with our land code, we're trying to build transit-oriented development so you can have denser development around metro stops, fewer parking spots, fewer setback requirements. And here, Metro is just kind of cutting through the Gordian knot and saying, we own this land. We can kind of get whatever we want on it. So let's get some dense, mixed-use development so we can get more people there to use these buses and fewer people in their cars on the road to help reduce pollution and reduce traffic.
Yeah, I was about to say, if they can get people to get on the buses instead of getting into traffic, that would be amazing. It would prevent so many wrecks. And also, maybe I could be able to drive sometime without being so scared on the road, because it is just way too many crazy Houston drivers on the streets going super fast. I just, I don't know, it makes my nerves bad. So that would be wonderful.
Maybe you should take the bus.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I should be the one to get on the bus. Okay, Sheam, what was your most overlooked story?
So the story that I chose this week as the most overlooked is that the Houston Police Department has a new $350,000 SWAT vehicle. It's a, uh, military-grade vehicle. And it's revived debates over the use of police using military-grade gear. There was an article about it in the Houston Chronicle. And the reason that it's my overlooked story is that this is something I've been actually following for a while, um, which is why do police use military-grade gear? And it's because, uh, when the War on Terror was launched, um, in 2001, part of it was this program called the 1033 program, which says that like extra military gear can go to police. And so what police will say is that like, hey, uh, we only use this stuff for like special situations, like things that might warrant it. So like, wouldn't you feel better if we had this extra stuff to use in these like special situations? And then people who study policing go, yes, but it's like human nature to just like want to use the toys that you have, um, to find uses for these like big gun type of toys. So, um, when I read that Houston has one of these vehicles, it reminded me of, uh, Moms for Housing in Oakland, which was like a group of three single moms who were, uh, there was a, there's a housing crisis in the Bay Area, and so they, uh, found an empty home and like squatted in it. And they brought out military-grade gear, like, to get the moms out. Um, which, yeah, that was the immediate image in my head whenever I hear about police getting these military-grade weapons.
Now, I think you're really on to something there, that when you have these tools, it sometimes it becomes boys and their toys. If you got that tank back there, you're like, I kind of want to use the tank. But whenever I see stories like this, I'm reminded of two things. One is a few years ago when local, uh, law enforcement agency Montgomery County Sheriff's Office got a drone. They got a drone to do surveillance work. And as they're testing it, this $250,000 drone, they accidentally crashed it into a lake. You know, I've got to wonder, like, what is the real value of these things? Like, what are we actually using it for? Uh, there is certainly, uh, evidence that, like, improved surveillance can help police close cases and create disincentives to crime. But like, come on, you could get a whole lot more for a quarter million dollars. On the other hand, with these big wheeled vehicles, I hear a lot of law enforcement say, we don't really use these for like catching the bad guys. We use these for when there's a flood and we need to drive through floodwaters. Like, that's why we have these things around. Uh, but I'm always a little skeptical on this kind of stuff.
I feel like they're just getting it because they get so much money from the actual, like, city budget that they're just like, ah, we need something to do with it, you know? Like, we, we're gonna buy it because we can, basically. So that's kind of what I'm viewing it as. My most overlooked story is that Governor Abbott approved a law that will be taking away water breaks from construction workers in Texas. Now, when I seen this, it kind of pissed me off because I just felt like this was insane. We are literally in some of the highest triple-digit temperatures that we've reached in years. And instead of trying to combat this and help people from having like, um, heat strokes and things like that, we're instead taking away water breaks from people who really need them. They're out in the heat constantly. It goes into effect September 1st, and what it's actually doing is taking it away from Austin and Dallas directly because they both established these 10-minute water breaks. And the way that it affects Houston is that we will never be able to put this in effect in our city. And it's really scary to me because Texas is a state where most workers have died from high temperatures, basically. Um, 42 have died in Texas between 2011 and 2021 from environmental heat exposure. And then last year in 2022 alone, there was 279 heat-related deaths in Texas. So that was the most since 1999. My thing is, why? Why, why, why? What was the purpose of this bill? Why would we take something like this away? What is the benefit?
Oh, the purpose is clear. The purpose is clear. The state is punishing cities. This is the Death Star bill. That the state doesn't like what cities are doing, and they're taking away the ability for cities to govern themselves. You know, it's not just these regulations requiring, uh, companies to allow workers to have water breaks, but it's regulations around, uh, solid waste dumping, around regulating properties, around all the basics of what you want a city to do. And it really is just astounding that a party, uh, the Republican Party, that once seemed to care so much about local governance and the government closest to you being the best, has decided to override all of that for something as basic as stuff like requiring water breaks when it's hot outside. And people say, oh, you know, you don't need a rule like this. You know, this already happens. All the employers already let this go on. Not the bad ones. The bad ones certainly don't. And you need that threat of government authority to stop bad actors from hurting people. Like, that's what the law is. You know, as, as the philosophers say, law is a command backed by a threat. You got to command these construction companies to allow their workers to have water breaks because we don't want them to die. And if they break it, you punish them. But now states can't do that. Bad actors are allowed to run free. It really is a shame.
Mm-hmm. Because I'm like, how is 10 minutes every four hours hurting you? Like, it's not gonna hurt you to let someone go rehydrate so that they can come back and work properly throughout the day.
You know, it's, it's not even about that. It's just about punishing cities, and it's about letting these companies do whatever they want. It is a philosophical war, I think, a partisan war detached from the reality on the ground.
Can I just add two quick things? Um, one is that, uh, Texas was hotter than 99% of the world on Wednesday. Um, that was something that I saw a meteorologist tweet with like a graph and data. And two, to Evan's point, um, there is something called the Flight 93 manifesto in like right-wing circles, which is the idea that anyone who's not conservative is driving this country to the ground. And so conservatives need to do whatever it takes to take control back and steer the country away from, like, destruction. And it's called Flight 93 because it's evoking 9/11. Um, and so I, I do think this stuff is important to talk about, and I do think it's important to name it for what it is. And this is a really important story, and it makes me sick to hear about it, Carly, because, yeah, again, this is a common sense law.
Oh, yeah. Politics is about power, and this is how power is going to be used to hurt workers and help the people who already have money.
Hmm, that is, yeah, that is so disheartening to hear. Um, let's get back on a better note. Let's talk about what's bringing us joy this week. Evan, what is bringing you joy this week?
Oh, what is bringing me joy? All these pictures I'm seeing of my local elected official standing in front of Poor Farm Ditch, which runs through my neighborhood, celebrating the $32.5 million they're bringing down to fix up this drainage ditch. For those who don't know, Poor Farm Ditch is a ditch, is a drainage ditch, like many that run through Houston that cuts through West U and South Side Place and City of Houston. And because it is divided between so many governments and has so many authorities over it, it is falling apart, and nobody's been able to get together to fix it, to figure out a plan to fix it. But they've finally gotten everyone on board. They've got Lizzie Fletcher, they've got Rodney Ellis, they've got Ann Johnson, they've got the cities of West U and South Side Place, and they've got Harris County all in to say, we're gonna stop the concrete sightings of this thing from falling in. We're gonna stop this from collapsing upon itself. So I am just happy to see this all fixed up. Now, there were plans or proposed plans to try to cap it and turn it into like a greenway, a hike-and-bike path, but you just couldn't pull it off. It wouldn't be able to drain as much water like that. And as some environmentalists point out, it's kind of nice to have this open ditch there. You look in, you see lots of birds, you see night herons, even see fish sometimes. So I hope that whatever the final design is, it really embraces that natural aspect of it and gets us like a little bit of nature in the middle of the neighborhood.
That sounds great. I'm glad to see that they're like coming together to finally get this fixed. All right, what about you, Sheam? What was your moment of joy?
So I've actually had multiple moments of joy in the form of McDonald's vanilla soft-serve ice cream cones, which I have about every other day or so as just a way to cool down in the middle of the workday. Um, and anytime someone wants to hang out, I ask them if they want to go to McDonald's to get a vanilla soft-serve ice cream. Uh, they're $1.83, and I think they're the best bang for your buck in terms of cooling down during the day. That's not air conditioning.
I'm just surprised that you found a McDonald's that actually has ice cream working this many days in a row. That's amazing.
That's actually so funny because I heard about that, that McDonald's ice cream machines just don't work ever. And I was like, what is everyone talking about? My Sugarland McDonald's is so reliable. And then I read that the FBI even opened up an investigation in case McDonald's was like, like, lying about their machines or something was happening, some like malfeasant ice cream activity was happening. But yeah, no, the McDonald's in Sugarland is extremely reliable when it comes to vanilla soft-serve ice cream.
That's good to hear because it really is location by location. Because I've got two McDonald's near me, and I know one of them, the shake and the ice cream machine works, and the other one, it doesn't. And I know that if I want like the hot fries, I got to go to one. If I want the ice cream, I got to go to the other.
But there's so many that don't actually have ice cream machines that work, and I'm like, how have you not brung anybody in to repair these at this point, especially in this heat? They could make a lot of money off those $1.80 ice creams. So, yeah, I'm glad that you found one. Okay, so my moment of joy is that me and our newsletter editor, Brooke, are going to go see a show at the Ensemble Theater tonight. Um, they're gonna be doing a production of Phenomenal Woman. And last time I went with my cousin, we had a great time. So I'm super excited about this one because they do really great production at the Ensemble Theater.
Oh, my God, that is such a great tip because I have not seen a play in Houston, and I'm gonna check out Ensemble.
Yes, you should definitely go. It's really nice. There's hors d'oeuvres. There's like wine and things like that, like before you go in, um, to watch the play. So it's a really nice atmosphere. I really enjoyed it. So if anybody's looking for a play to go to, check out the Ensemble Theater for sure.
That sounds great. I gotta say, you know, now is the time to do anything inside. Go see a play, go see a movie. Like, just enjoy someone else paying for air conditioning.
Exactly, exactly. And it's at like nighttime. I think it's like seven or eight. So the sun is a little cool, so you won't get like all sweaty just like getting in the car or anything like that. It's the perfect little event to go to, um, while the summer heat is blasting us. Thank you, too, for, uh, being on today. It was great. We got a lot of information. I learned a lot, and, um, I'll see y'all soon.
Thanks, Carly.
Have a great July 4th.
Yes, 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 yes. Bye.
That was Evan Minz, Sheam Galyon, and Carleon Jones. You can find all of the stories we talked about with the links in our show notes. That will do it for this week on CityCast Houston. Our lead producer is Deena Kespa. Our producer is Carleon Jones. Our newsletter editor is Brooke Lewis, and the host is me, Rahil Ramzan Ali. Our music is by the band All the Kimonos. We'll be back on Monday with a summer day trip you need to do ASAP. Thank you for listening, and I hope you learned something new.
So the thing about Evan is that they know everything because they played Sims as a young person. And so I really see them as like, they're like a high expert in my eyes. And I'm like, yes, tell me more, because
I mean, I, I did play a lot of SimCity, I will say.